Hey.
Thank you guys so very much. Let's start. Welcome in opening. We're going to call to order the December 8, 2021, Operation Budget and Physical Affairs Committee Meeting. I am Belinda Queen, the Chair of the Committee and your District Six Representative for the Prince George County Board of Education. Thank you to each and every one of you for being here this evening. At this time, we will have the adoption of December 8, 2021 meeting agenda. May I have a motion to approve the December 8, 2021 meeting agenda?
I move to adopt and approve the December 8, 2021 agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you so very much. We have a motion to adopt the agenda and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, of course, and the motion has current. Can we get approval of the November 17 minutes meeting? May I have a motion approved the June 5th? Well, let's say November 17 meeting 2021. I'm sorry. November 17 meeting 2021. May I have a motion to approve the meeting from minutes?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from November 17, 2021.
Thank you so very much, board members. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so very much, board member Harris. I appreciate it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this time we have no public comments. We're going to go into the discussion of action items. At this time, we're going to talk about the OBAC committee progress report discussion. It has been displayed and you guys can read the report. I don't know if y'all had a chance to go over it, but we're going to present it to the whole board on next week. So I'm not sure if all the committee members saw the report. Ayesha? Okay, did anybody have any questions or concerns about the report? No questions?
No ma'am.
Okay, we'll move forward with that report. We will report it out. I don't want to report it out now because it's for the regular board meeting. So we're going to report that out for the regular board meeting. So we're going to move right along then. At this time, we're going to have the first quarter internal audit report. So who, Ms. Winston, is that you?
It is.
Thank you so very much.
Ms. Queen, thank you so very much. And I will share my screen. Okay, is everyone able to see the presentation?
Yes ma'am.
Great. So my presentation is to summarize the first quarter results of the internal audit accomplishments. And that's for the quarter July 1 through September 30, 2021. And for that period, we issued 12 total audit reports. We have, we received a total of 72 hotline reports and conducted 12 property inventory assessments. And through those activities, we audited over $4.3 million in assets. And this slide shows the 72 hotlines that were received, the categories for those hotlines. You'll see at the top, the most frequent are the employee relations, safety issues and sanitation and school and office management. And so most frequent, I believe there might have been some confusion at the beginning of the year. When schools, when schools were open, there was initially a hotline for staff and students who might have issues with their electronic devices, that they needed help with their passwords, what have you. So a lot of these calls were for that purpose. They were afforded to the IT help desk for the issues of safety issues and sanitation. There were some concerns expressed by staff regarding the notice when someone had caught COVID. For student activity funds, there were 11 reports issued, two of them for charter schools, six elementary schools and three high schools. The second column gives you the scope of the audit. That's the beginning of the period and the end of the period for that particular school's audit. The next to the last column is the total number of findings that resulted from the audit. And then the final column is the number of those findings that were repeated findings. And all of these reports are published on the PDCPS website, specifically on internal audits website. The operational audit was the supplemental payroll follow-up and overtime payments audit. And this was an audit of supplemental payroll from, and a follow-up from a previous 2018 audit. The scope included reviewing the mere mediation status of the action plan recommendations from that 2018 audit, as well as a review of overtime. 226 employees were reviewed. There were two findings. The first finding was overtime paid to employees for work performed during the normal work hours during the period of March 16 through June 30 of 2020. And this was the very beginning stages of the COVID closing. Management did respond and partially concur with our recommendation. The noted finding was that there was a conflict with the negotiated agreement language as far as the payment of that overtime. Managers did not have a documented directive, although executive approval for this overtime had occurred. The second finding is management of overtime timekeeping process. Management did respond, concur with a corrective action date of April 15 of 2021. This, that probably is supposed to be April 15 of 2022, I'm sorry. Incomplete and missing documentation, lacking supervisor pool one delinquent submission of overtime, some instances found. And for the audit follow-up piece to the 2018 audit, there were five individual findings. On the first, insufficient guidance for supplemental payroll. That is, that is partially implemented, the action plan. The second, internal controls for supplemental payroll payments that required improvement. That was not implemented, but the corrective action date is projected for April 1, 2022. The third finding, supplemental payroll payments data not monitored. The action plan was implemented. On the fourth workshop, workshop staff development payments not paid in accordance with unit agreement. The action plan was implemented. And finally, the policies and controls regarding professional development league that were lacking was partially implemented. For property assessments, we conducted 12 property inventories during that time period. And here are the list of those particular locations, schools and office buildings as well. The total number of unlocated items as a result of the inventory, the cost of those items, which is the purchase price. And then finally, the CIO's depreciation value for those items. And this slide gives you a listing of, these were the audits that we had planned to complete. And it shows you that we actually completed everything that we planned to complete. Operational audit, student activity funds and property assessments that are shown as 100% complete. And all of those audit reports have been issued. And so our planned audits for this particular quarter that we're in, we plan to complete the risk assessment, an audit of budget and management services, school emergency procedures, a review of grade changes and overrides, and a review of salary changes. And all of these have been committed so far, with the exception of the grade changes and overrides, which we wanted to wait until the quarter had completely changed out. And also that the grade changing window had closed. And I believe that's on December 17, so we probably won't actually start this audit until January. And that concludes my report. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Winston. Does anyone else have any other questions? Are there any questions? Okay, Ms. Boozer.
Thank you so much. Ms. Winston, on the property assessments, the 12 property inventories for the schools, can you just review a little more about this data? Are these the, are these the missing items or are these the physically counted items within the building?
So this is the result of what we do when we conduct a property inventory is we take the listing from the asset management system and then we go to the school and we perform a physical inventory. But we also consider a list of items that we know that many students have items, you know, at their homes, what have you. If someone is teleworking, so there's also some consideration for those items. So these are the residual items that are remaining on the list, but we were unable to account for.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I, I assume this was the same as some of the other reports. And so what we're really, giving some context here to some of these larger numbers, like a Port Townsend Elementary being a really large elementary school. And then, you know, the, in, you know, the distribution period, the unexpected distribution for distance learning. Is that what we're seeing is that this was record keeping? Like these Chromebooks are probably still in circulation, but maybe the number wasn't written down and attributed to the particular student?
We, and that's some of the response that we're getting back from the CIO that perhaps there's some inaccuracy in the, in the asset management system. And especially at the very beginning, when they were distributing assets, there was not necessarily the accounting, if you will, and documentation of assets. And sometimes there were assets that maybe needed to be removed from the system because they were lost or, you know, traded in for residual value, what have you, but they have not been removed from the system.
Right, yeah, and I just, I just wanted to make sure there's clarity around that this was, this does reflect the time period of, of our emergency closures and emergency distributions.
Yes, this is the period of July through September 30 or so, the very beginning stages of the school year.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or concerns? If not, we're going to move right forth again. Thank you so very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so at this time, we will be moving right along to the external audit report.
Perfect. Good evening, Ms. Queen. Thank you very much. Let me share my screen and hopefully everybody can see. Can everybody see the presentation that I have?
Yep.
Awesome, perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for letting, letting me join the call. As you know, Video, this is the first year's, Video just transitioned over from your prior accounting firm. So this is the first year that Video is doing the audit for Prince George's County Public School System. So I'm very excited to be here to present the results of the financial statement audits. And my name is Malo Shet. I'm the lead partner on the engagement. I know we met back in June when we initially had just started the audit. So this kind of is combination of three months of hard work from both management side and from our side. So overall, the status of the audit, we have completed our audit, we have issued the financial report. So there were two, two reports that were issued. One is the opinion on the financial statement report itself. And along with that, as required under the Yellow Book Guidance, which is the governmental auditing standard, there is a Yellow Book Report that was separately issued along with the financial statements. Both the reports were unmodified reports, which means that's the highest level of assurance as our independent auditors can provide, that the numbers that are in the financial statements are free from material misstatements. The objective of the audit is to not to provide an absolute assurance. As you know, an audit is only done on a test basis for transactions that happen for the year. So we don't look at each and every transaction that happens in the school system. We do a testing of those transactions. So based on those testing and looking at the control environment the school system has and inquiring with clients, reading through the board minutes and making sure we are touching all the material accounts and balances, confirming them with third parties. We are able to give a reasonable assurance that financial statements are free from material misstatements. There are other aspects to the financial statements as part of the annual comprehensive financial report, which includes the statistical information that goes at the back of the financial statement and also some of the other management discussions that go into the numbers and describing those numbers. The object of that audit is to not opine on that information, so that's considered other information. We definitely look at that information and compare it to the audited numbers that we have encountered and to make a reasonable estimation that those numbers are accurate in the form and content that they are put together in the financial statement. So we don't provide any assurance over that, but that's a very integral part of the entire EFR. That's, it's on issued as part of the financial statements. I'm glad to say management corporations were excellent. I know Michelle Winston is on the call. So is Mike Herbsman and Keith Stewart. I can see Pete Stewart. All, all, all the management was very forthcoming in every kind of information that we had asked. And we did ask a lot of information, so I'm happy to say there was no resistance there. Everybody was very forthcoming. In COVID times, especially, I would have liked to be in person to do the audit, of course. But given the situation, we did a completely remote audit this year. And I'm hoping next year we can be out there at the school system to kind of do the audit. But even with that kind of roadblocks, we were able to accomplish what we were able to and get the financial statement out. Just going a little bit more into the details of the audit and there are certain policies and estimates that go in making up the financial statements. We reviewed those policies and estimates. We compared those policies to different government audits that we perform. But look at the industry and look at what's required under the accounting standards. So we compared those policies and estimates to see if they're reasonable in practice and look at what's out in the industry to ensure that the school system is not doing anything that's very aggressive, per se, or it's the, it's right there, reasonable in that sense. So we looked at those significant estimates that you can see on the right. The counts receivable, the useful line of capital assets, self-insured liabilities related to the claims that were made before the year but are not reported yet by the insurance companies. And then the pension and the other post-employment benefits, there are factors that go into there which are based on actual information, like the discount rate and such. We actually into those to ensure that those are reasonable. The school system did adopt two new GASB guidance. So GASB comes out with new accounting pronouncements. Almost, I would say, every year with COVID, last year, there were some deferment of some of these GASB pronouncements and adoption of those. The first one that did have financial statement impact, more on disclosure and how the numbers are recorded, is the fiduciary activity. So as Michelle was talking about the student activity fund, if you remember from prior years, those student activity funds were classified as fiduciary activities. So they were not part of, of the school system's financial numbers. They were separately shown as fiduciary activities, though they, though they did not impact the general fund or any other special revenue fund or capital projects fund. With this fiduciary activity GASB, what that does is now those student activity funds are now part of the school system. So management, after reviewing the fiduciary fund GASB statement concluded that those student activity funds should now be recorded as special revenue fund. So when you look at the financial statement, you will see that all the student activity fund from moving forward from this year will be included in the main financial statements. And any monies received and any expenses made under those funds will be accounted by, by the school system itself. The second, second GASB statement that was adopted was number 98. This was a very straightforward adoption. It basically changes the terminology of the financial statement from comprehensive annual financial report to annual comprehensive financial report. There is some, some talks about the, the short form of the comprehensive annual financial report does have, lack of a better word, a slang to it in some of the, some of the countries in the world. So GASB decided rather than continuing with that term, they moved away from it and called it now the annual comprehensive financial report. Does not change number-wise or disclosure-wise, does not change anything in the financial statement. This is more the terms that are used itself in the financial report. Other than that, there were no other significant changes in the report. COVID did play a role, continuing role, I should say. And you could see that in the special revenue fund where the expenses and revenue from a lot of student activity was reduced along with some of the meals and everything in there. There, there is an impact on the federal grant side, so I forgot to mention. So there is a third report that we are working on, which is the single audit report. So that report does opine on the federal grants that the school system gets. So the school system usually gets its grants from Maryland State Education Board, which is a pass-through from the Department of Education. But with COVID, there was a new grant from Department of Treasury, which is the coronavirus relief fund. So we are testing those programs and hoping by the end of this month, we should be able to issue the single audit report that would opine on the federal expenses that were incurred by the school system. Just so, on, from the overall level, the financial statements, I said it's unmodified report. There were no issues that would make us to qualify. However, we test number of things as part of the financial reporting. And one of the items that we did test this year was the procurement and how the procurement process is working. How, how, if the procurement laws or the policies are there, kind of match up to the state of Maryland policies and the education board's policies. So we compared those, so as it, there are probably thousands of procurements that happen in the school system every year. We selected a sample of those policies. And what we found, encountered in a couple of instances was, one, there, the policy for the school system is for any emergency procurements, if there are more than $25,000, there needs to be an approval from the Board of Education. We did not see that approval happening, the process of that approval happening. And then in one other instance, it was noted that the procurement documents for a procurement that happened a couple of years ago, I believe, there were no, the information was not retained by management. So overall, that is considered a finding. So there in the Yellow Book Report, there is a significant deficiencies related to procurement process in there. Management has provided their response and corrective action to the findings. It's part of the Yellow Book Report. And more, from what I can understand, those are in the process of implementation. And by the new year, those corrective actions would be placed in motion. Finally, there are some other required communications from, as your auditors, to those charging governance. If there are any other items we would like to bring, this is the area where we like to kind of tell you what happened. Like I said, there, there, overall, this is a new client for us. So everything that we did was kind of a surprise to management. The way we are testing, the way we look at things, the way some of the tests that we do. So the, there were planned audit strategies at the beginning of the audit and we didn't, we didn't note any significant changes to those planned audit strategies. There are no matters that we would like to bring to attention in terms of any violations that we found for laws and regulations or any material misstatements or fraud risks that we noted in the financial statement process that we would like to bring to the attention of, of the committee. Like you said, as part of our testing, we bring in regularly our experts to, to make sure that whatever management is saying, especially on those areas where a specialist is needed, like I said, the review of pension liability and review of post-employment benefit liability. We did bring our own expert to ensure that some of the estimation process of the discount rate or the investment rate of return, those parts of calculations, which are sometimes very complex, we had the proper, proper expertise in-house to kind of bring in, look at those and make sure that those were reasonable. And we didn't find any issues regarding the reasonability of those assumptions to calculate the pension liability and the OPEB liability. As far as we are aware, there was no consultation by management with other, with other independent accounting firms regarding opinion shopping or any other kind of talks regarding the financial statements. We evaluated related party relationships to make sure that they've been recorded accurately. They, like you said, we, we, there were, there were no significant findings. The findings that did arose related to procurement are located and disclosed properly in the financial statement in the Yellow Book. Sorry. There were no disagreements with management on any of the subject matters related to financial statements. There were no difficulties encountered during audit, like, like you said. We did audit remotely, so there were a lot of teams meeting, a lot of back and forth over phone calls. And ideally, it would have been great to be at the school system, but unfortunately, we could not. And I'm hoping next year, we'll definitely be out there permitting how the environment is. There were no other difficult contentious matters outside of the engagement team that we need to bring to the table. And there are no other financial reporting matters that were not already talked about. There is a management representation letter that does get signed by management at the end of the audit. It's not attached here, but I'm sure management will be able to provide you that representation letter if requested. So I know I had a few minutes to kind of talk through it, but if there are any questions I can answer on the financial statements or the audit or any of the communications I just mentioned.
Thank you so very much. I just want to, first of all, thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. And I see Mike has his hands up, but before, I just have one question I want to clarify. So you did make a statement. I just want to understand what I said, that you said that it was just one problem that you noticed that procurement for over $25,000 was not being approved by the board?
Emergency procurements over $25,000, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. And so you have addressed it with staff. You have addressed that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I think I see Keith on, on the line. But yeah, as part of, as part of the finding, resolution of finding, there was a corrective action plan that was put in place. And let us know, that was, at the end, that was, I guess it was after the audit, the corrective action would have been put in place. So we have not audited that corrective action yet. It will be part of the subsequent audit when we actually look at it and revisit to see what steps management has taken to correct that finding.
Okay, and so what the correction action of not just that of any other items? How much time was given for them to make corrective actions on these items?
So.
I'm just curious, they say right away, let's stop doing this, let's make sure it's done the right way. How much time with the corrected actions?
So the corrective action, and I don't know, Mike, if you want to jump in, the corrective action happens after the finding is done. So it'll happen, it probably happened in December sometime, if it has happened or not, that I'm not aware of. What, what was provided us was a corrective action plan, that this is the plan to correct this finding moving forward. Unfortunately, I don't think they can go back in time to correct anything, right? So anything moving forward, they will be able to correct and put policies to say that this would not happen in the future. This, this similar kind of findings would not come up.
Great, great. That's what I wanted to hear, that action was moving forward. So thank you so very much. Did anybody else, Mike, you had your hand up, did you have any questions, Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, another question, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Scheth and the BDO team as well as Ms. Winston and the internal audit team for their partnership throughout the audit, working together. And just want to say to Mr. Scheth too, that we look forward to you to coming in person next year to work with us.
Same here, thank, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so very much. If no other board members have any other questions again, I just want to ditto what Mr. Hurstman, and even thank him also for the awesome job he does as our coof. Thank you for the awesome job that you do also. Thank you all for making sure that we are all being responsible for our taxpayer dollars. And that's what it's all about, making sure that we're being physically responsible to make sure that we are using each and every dollar for the things that we're supposed to use from board, that we're being correct in using them and make sure that we're not doing things that we're not supposed to do. So again, I can't say how much each and every one of you are so important to Prince George's County Public Schools. As we get sixty percent of our money from the county, it's important to make sure that we are being responsible for that money. So hats off to each and every one of you who is a part of this committee. Again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I thank you for each and every, I'm sure taxpayers for making sure that we're doing the right things. Okay, so as we move right along, then we're gonna go ahead and have our next report. It is a review, I believe. Yes, it is a review of the school registration review, very important, very important review of how registration's been going on. Thank you for taking the time to give us this review. We know we make hand, we get, we get funds by the number of students that we have. I mean, the numbers of students that we don't have, the lunch, everything that is makes a difference. And we just want to make sure that when students are registered, they're registered on time. And we're getting, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing at the school system. So thank you for coming to us and give that review. So who is doing that?
That would be me.
There you go.
And share my screen. Thank you, Madam Chair, again Doug Strater, Chief of Accountability. I have shared a presentation with you all that was developed from our pupil accounting office here at Prince George's County Public Schools. The presentation itself is very detailed. As far as the step-by-step process for registering slash enrolling students in our district. What I'll do is bounce around a little bit, trying to stay at the high level. And if you have any particular questions, I definitely can get down more so into the detail. But I would like to begin by giving you a little bit of a history of what it is that we've done, how we get to this point of looking at enrolling students and doing so. I'm, like I said, I'm going to bounce around here a little bit. I'm going to begin here. And hopefully you can see my screen has transitioned, correct? To like an old form, you see that? Okay, excellent. So this is the old way that we would have registered students within our district. Old slash existing, this is the paper way. Now, I know you can't see all the words in the forms and we can gladly share with you up your fourteen, our PA fourteen form and, and what exactly it entails, but it's really just here so you can get a visual of the volume of information that's required through this process. So our parents, at some point in time, starting in the spring of a prior school year through the summer, all the way up to the first day of school, would walk into one of their neighborhood schools and request an enrollment form. And this is what they'd be provided. Parents would then complete this form. Once they've completed the form, they would then have to provide the adequate documentation to support the form. In other words, they'd have to provide the proof of age, like a birth certificate for the child, proof of residency, proof of immunization, and so on and so forth, this type of required documentation. The school would then take the paper form along with all the other supporting documents, review that, make sure that they meet all the compliance requirements. They would physically take those papers into the back office, make copies of those, drop those into the hard cumulative folders for each of the students. And then they would take this form that you see here on your screen, take it and then enter it into our student information system via computer called SchoolMax. So this has been our traditional process for decades. Except for the SchoolMax pieces come and gone, we've had some other applications in place. But this form has remained pretty much unchanged. Well, then the pandemic hit. And when the pandemic hit, the exchange of paper, the physical contact of parents coming into our buildings became limited. And we had to quickly switch or find another solution for attempting to enroll our students. And doing so, we were able to leverage an existing partnership we have with a company called Scribbles. We use that company to manage all of our transcripts. They actually have a national network of transcripts. They have a set format so schools can easily move transcripts from district to district, state to state. So we have a subscription to this membership, to this, this company called Scribbles. They also have this enrollment process. So because we had an existing contract with them, an existing relationship with them, we understood the data transfers and so forth that we have with them regarding our transcripts. We were able to leverage that company to assist us in creating an online enrollment application for our students. Again, they are a national company here, they work with many, many school districts. So initially, we weren't afforded much flexibility in customizing the platform for our own needs, right? We instead just had to sign on for basically the same process that every other district that they have partnered with across the nation had to as well. So it was rather difficult as far as to initiate this process. But again, we had to push the emergency status of the pandemic for us to make this happen. So all of our staff, we had to train very quickly, all of our school-based staff, all two hundred and nine schools, their registrars, their counselors. We had to get everyone caught up to speed very quickly on this process. So what I'd like to do now is transition to scribbles, talk about what that process looks like very, you know, again, at a high level. And then I'll talk about what we're doing right now to explore improvements to the system moving forward. Does that sound about right where everyone wants to go? Okay. So again, I'm going to bounce around here just a little bit. And I'm going to take you to, if you go to our enrollment tab on the, on our website, on the splash page of our website, there's a button on the top right corner that says enroll students here. You click on that and it takes you to this front page right here. And basically, there's four steps that parents have to partake in to enroll students via the online platform. And the four steps are outlined right here. They have to, one, create an account for the system, the parent has to create an account. They then have to add their students to that account. Some families have more than one student, so they have to add each student to that parent account. They then have to submit an act, an actual application for enrollment. And then last but not least, on the parent's side, they have to upload all of those documents that I mentioned earlier for the paper. They still have to provide a copy or an image of the birth certificate, some type of proof of residency, you know, whether it's utility bills, leases, you know, whatever the case is. All of that still has to be loaded into the system. So for this enrollment piece, I do wish to emphasize these first two points right here, creating the account and adding a child to your account. This right here is consistent. Our parents have to do this no matter how they interact with scribbles. So I mentioned earlier that we use scribbles for all of our transcript requests. So as students move about, if they leave Prince George's County Public Schools and enroll in Arlington or DC Public Schools, and they need to request their transcript to be forwarded to those schools, they're going to use scribbles. If they're graduating and they wish to have a formal transcript as we would know it, they would have to use scribbles. So again, and in that application process for accessing those transcripts, they would still again have to go through these first two steps of creating an account, assigning a student to those accounts. And then here, instead of submitting an application for enrollment, they would be submitting an application for transcript. You see what I mean? The other area which we use scribbles is for all of our lotteries, our specialty area programs, both the high school level, elementary level, all of it, and our charter applications, our charter school lotteries. All of those lotteries also go through the scribbles platform. So again, first, the same first two steps for our specialty program lotteries. What would be unique is in the submitting the application process. They would actually be submitting an application for the specialty area lottery, whatever the case is. So again, we're trying to get our parents acclimated to the use of scribbles. And once you create an account, that account stays with you throughout your career that we continue with scribbles. So these first two steps are initial first two steps. The other two steps here that you see here is specific to enrollment and depending on what other, other activity you wish to engage in, that would vary accordingly. So for the enrollment piece, again, four steps, there's actually videos that help our parents along the way. So they can click the video and it's also available in the three languages that you see here. So parents can see exactly what they need to do step by step to get through these processes for scribbles. So this is what the initial page looks like. Now I'm going to take you inside here. And we're going to take a closer look at the application itself. So again, when you click on the first one, creating an account in English, you're going to see the information you see here, very high level, parents have to go in, include their name, address, phone numbers, their specific contact information. I can say this is critical. Because in the paper application I shared with you earlier, we're not capturing parent email address, which is, that's optional, and also phone numbers are optional. If you're completing an application within scribbles, it requires that information. So right now in our student information system, SchoolMax, we only have roughly thirty five percent of our parents' email addresses, accurate email addresses in our system, which really restricts our ability to communicate with our parents that we found out during the pandemic. So switching over to an online enrollment application process here has really helped us require some, some desperately needed fields. So we continue to communicate well with our parents now that we're in this new technical world. So again, first, first step, you're creating an account. Next step, you're associating your students, you're tagging students to the parent accounts to create the test account for this, we just called them student, student tester, last name, student tester, tester. These are just sample students. So you then begin the process of just registering or creating those enrollment applications for those kids. You just have two clicks that you need to do saying, yes, I do intend on enrolling my students into Prince George's County Public Schools. And then it asks, is this a newly enrolled student or are you on a transitional grade level? So for instance, all of our students transitioning from grade eight to grade nine, we require our parents to revalidate residency. So here, what we're talking about are newly enrolled students. So a parent would have to click on, yes, we need to complete, in this case, an elementary student, a new elementary school enrollment for the student. And then the last thing that the parent has to do is sign off saying that all the information is accurate. And so they got to require some background information so we can make sure that parent is in fact that parent. And that when they're signing off on this, you know, we have their authorizations and there's some information outlined there. And that's basically the process, the initial process. All right, so where are our pain points in registering our students? What I can say is at this point right here, one of the challenges are, our parents think, okay, I've completed the application. I'm done. Well, you're not done yet, because now you've got to go in and you've got to actually upload all of the required documents. So the application status for those parents right now will say pending. And the parent is prompted to go back to that initial page that I shared with you and click on that fourth link that says upload documents. And again, the parents got to go in and they've got to upload the documents for the proof of residency, proof of age, guardian official government issued IDs and so forth. They've got to go through the process of uploading those documents. Now, once they complete that process and everything's uploaded, we are now good to go for those parents and those students to be processed as far as the parent's side of the shop's concern. Kids are in the system, documents are there, they are now officially waiting for the school's response saying we're going to accept this student. How do parents know that? If they go into scribbles, it says status pending. So this is where a lot of the parents think, okay, scribbles is sitting there spinning their wheels, right? Nothing seems to be happening in scribbles. Well, let's say the earlier example was an elementary school. The registrar there is a ten-month employee. That registrar isn't going to report to school until two weeks before school starts. But the parent applied in June, so that pending status sits until that registrar reports in the building and begins processing all of these applications. And that's a problem as far as what scribbles actually communicates to the parent, because the parent doesn't know where the issue is. They don't understand at this point that it's actually waiting for a response from the school. So on our end, we often hear a lot of complaints about scribbles itself, you know, scribbles has been in its wheel. And I don't know what's going on with scribbles, when in fact, it's actually the holdup is at the schoolhouse and not with scribbles. So this is another one of those pain points that I'm talking about here that we're addressing to see if we can't make the process more streamlined and transparent for parents to know their status. So then what goes on behind the scenes? So like I said, the parents now have completed their responsibility. It now shifts to what the school staff has to do. So what does a school have to do? Well, the school's got to now go into this. They get notifications every time a parent completes an application and the documentation's present. It now moves over to the school and the registrar gets a flag, gets an email saying that Doug Strater is now, there's a request for Doug Strater's enrollment in Duval High School. So the registrar gets this information, the registrar then has to review the application itself online. They're just looking at exactly what the parents put into the system. They then click on the actual documents and they can certify each of the documents. Yes, that is a valid birth certificate, yes, that lease will work now that utility bill is three months old, we need something more current. And they go through the process of either accepting the applications that they see or they reject them. And when they reject them, they type in a comment to the parent, hey, I see you trying to do this. Unfortunately, we can't accept this as proof of residency, instead I need you to do this. So there's a back and forth online with the parents to try to reconcile and get everything right. What I can say though, if you think about online, that back and forth at least is occurring electronically. Prior to this, in the old paper way of dealing with it, that parent would have to go back and forth to the school. If any of you experienced the wonderful trips to the MBA, you know, you think you go on the first time and you got everything you need and it never seems to happen that way. That's often the case of what goes on in our schools. The parents think they have the right documentation, but they're missing this or they're missing that. And they have to go back and forth and it becomes rather frustrating for both the parents and the school staff of reconciling this. So at least this is all online behind the scenes. So once the school begins communicating with the parent, things seem to be going well from that point forward. Again, our issue is usually Again, our issue is usually after the parent submits the documentations to when the school gets engaged, that lull in the action seems to create a lot of angst. So again, that's what we need to focus on to, to, you know, at least reduce what that time period looks like and be more transparent to our parents as far as what's going on behind the scenes. But again, most of the rest of it is straightforward. Once the school approves everything, the applications are all set, they then have to print out that information. Drop it in the student's Q M folder, and then they got to enter the student's information in the SchoolMax. So it's the same as paper. So the last two bullets here, same process that you see with the paper. So where are our issues, our pain points? One of the greatest pain points, like I've shared with you earlier, is in the process of that lag time between when parents submit the application or thinking they've submitted the application and waiting for the school to actually accept that application. So that's one, one main area there. The next main area is this spot right here, the school goes through. They accept the application, everything looks good, and then the parents have to wait for the schools to then enter the information into our student information system and assign the student a schedule. This process right here is the most labor-intensive process for our actual school-based folks. Everything else prior, you have the parent completing the application. And then you have anyone, it could be, and oftentimes it's my office that provides supports to our schools. You can have anyone going in and validating the documents, right? We can have a central repository of staff that are going through and validating birth certificates and, and photo IDs and leases and so on and so forth. All of that is very generic. It takes a little bit of time, but that's not as big of a deal as it is, or labor-intensive it is for the schools as it is when you get to this last step. And this is where our schools in the online version and dealing with the pandemic have requested or are going through an interview process with parents. Parents actually have to request for appointments to do this last step. High Point High School, they still have appointments out there for parents to get students enrolled. So this last step, very labor-intensive for the schools, and this is what's taken a long time. And by the way, this last step is indifferent whether it's paper or it's online, right? So what our staff have to do, they got to go in, they enter the basic information, our student information system. It's these last two bullets right here, the actual creation of the schedule of those students, that is an individualized effort. The scheduler, registrar has to sit down, look at the student's prior transcript from wherever they're coming from. Try to figure out what are the most appropriate courses for those students to enroll in at their current school, they have to look for seat space. Most appropriate teachers and so forth, and creating that schedule for the students, and then make it happen. So this lag in this enrollment process right here unfortunately is very intensive and it's at the school. And this is one of the hardest nuts for us to crack right now. But we're, we're working through it. So that's a high-level summary. We have three main key identified pain points of looking at this online application. Right now, three areas that we're trying to focus on to resolve for at least this upcoming summer's enrollment for the next school year. Now, I say those three because we're also in the process, we have a work group that's pulled together which includes principals, registrars. Guidance counselors at both elementary, secondary level as well as the pupil accounting staff to support with this work, as well as from the IT office. We call the training group there, the T three group. So we have members from each of these groups evaluating this process and working through this process. It seems like pretty much every vendor has very similar steps that we've outlined here. So I'm not sure if scribbles is the issue, or if it's the process, or if it's an integration between scribbles and our and our student information system. So there are some efficiencies there that we can recognize and take advantage of. But by and large, we really need to tackle that last piece of how do we best support schools and getting these schedules ready for our students. And that's the piece we're working on. So I know, Madam Chair, you've mentioned in the past the email traffic and so forth, you had mentioned maybe creating hubs or getting some temp assistance, temp worker assistance in the district in the summertime to help with the processing of these things. And we're looking into that, and that will help on that first part of this, you know, of going through all the documentation and so on and so forth. What we're really trying to figure out now too, in conjunction with that, is how do we support our counselors and those folks during that critical time of the early part of the summer? Well, actually throughout the summer anyway, of actually getting these schedules for our students. So that's the work we're engaged in now. Our target to complete the work group and the recommendations moving forward is to have this work group completed by the end of January. So we have the recommendations in place for the next enrollment cycle for next school year. So again, that work group is meeting every other week right now and going through many of these details, and I will be able to provide a report to you, it should be within the first week or two of February. See how that aligns with your schedule, but I can come back to you and share with you, you know, the status of their, their work group difference. So with that, I'll now turn it over to you all for any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you so very much for the presentations after S. I truly appreciate it. Does any of the committee members have any questions? Go ahead, committee member Booth.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this presentation and for highlighting this. I certainly, there was a lot of pain for, I know Northwestern High School, this cycle in ways that I had not heard in the past, and I, I definitely, that staffing timing was, you know, brought up, you know, from the, the parents wondering, you know, why we staff the way we do? Why don't we have these registrars, you know, working all summer? So I'm glad to hear those discussions about how to accommodate that. But just the work group alone that I can report back to the community is great, and I think what would be helpful to me would be just like a paragraph write-up, an official write-up about the work group that I could put in correspondence or use when I'm emailing with anyone who's asking about this or in a report that is accurately conveys the work group mission and, and some of the the challenges that you covered that we're looking for solutions. So, but I'm really pleased to hear that there's immediate response because I, it was the, it clearly was a very tough in August and September. But I think there's even some, you know, students are enrolling year-round, and this needs to be addressed. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Unfortunately, I guess my take on is a little different from board member Booth's. I feel like we've come so far close to get to the 21st century, but yet we seem to have gotten so far back. I, I don't understand why we're having a problem enrolling students. I believe we are a school system that should be far more better than that. And to hear that students who have been trying to enroll since August and here eight, 10 months later still have not been enrolled is just, to me, is not, is not good enough. Stephanie, not with so much online, it's been going, things have been done on computer by hand. So I have a couple of questions for you. And not to dismiss anything else you guys have been doing, I know you've been doing your best, you know, so I do want to give kudos for that, but I just think we can do better. Are we gonna, and not only that we can do better, we have to do better. It depends on students being enrolled and getting the proper education that we are supposed to be giving these students. So it's not the fact that we're going to do better, we have to really do better to make sure these students are enrolled. So one of my questions is with this new system, what we have, it seems as if no matter what, every student is going to be required to go through this system. So my question would be to, I don't know, Mr. Irvin, is this the you or existing Dr. S? Why aren't we just telling parents to go ahead and register? To find out that any of my children, whether they graduate or not, and now they're going to need transcripts, they still got to be a part of their system. So why not just put it out there to all of our parents? Hey, we need you all now to go and get, be registered now to be a part of this new system. Why have them wait till the last minute to try to register? That's my first question. My next question is, part of this system, I hear you're excited about the phone numbers and the email addresses. But what about our homeless population who don't have phone numbers, who don't have email addresses, who phone numbers and emails change? Is it a part on it to say, hey, click if you're a homeless population? Is that on there to make things a little easier for them? So that was my next thing. And then when you got to the pain points, I'm going to be honest with you. That really bugs me the, really the most, because I think at that point when we realized that and, and, and I realized, you know, from, I've raised twenty-one kids, you guys know that. And every child had to be registered, and I can go back even from the days as a graduate when I went up to that school and when you register a kid in new school, you got four basic classes, your English, your math, your social study, your science, that's basic. And the hardest thing that I ever known was people to, to get them extracurricular class, you know, whether they was going to get gym, whether they was going to get musical. You know, whether they was going to get social study, them has always been the hardest things. But to say that it's taken us a long time to figure out what, where they're going to put students in certain class, that's puzzling to me. Because our basic class should already be prepared to set regular students in. Our math, our English, science, social study, that should be so easy. The hardest thing should be that extracurricular activities that they need. And so it really bothers them to find out that that's what's taking a long time. And this is just my opinion as a board member with years of experience, I just think we have to do better. We have to do better at making sure that this stuff is already set, excuse my phone for ringing, cellphone ringing in the background, you guys. But I just think that we have to make sure that these things are already set. To, to make sure that we have them spots for people to be registered, because we're going to constantly have people register, we're going to constantly have people to go out. It's going to be both ways to Prince George's County Public Schools, but we just want to make sure that this process is a smooth process for parents to get their students registered in our school, especially if kids are transferring. It should be so easy, and so it is bothering for us to be a school system that takes so long. And I'm just, I'm really hoping that as was stated by board member Strugger, that the committee that we are putting task force, what I'm putting together, will make it better, not just for us, but as for the parents also. Because I want to make sure, and you guys know me, my most important thing is customer service. I want to make sure that we're giving the best customer service to our parents, to our students, to our staff. And I just want to make sure that we're doing all we can do to make sure that that process is so smooth for everybody. Again, I thank you so very much, but please take them things back and just let them know. Things are much worse, and I just think we, we can do better, we have, it's not that we can, we have to do better. And, you know, and I really feel that way.
Will do, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so very much again for taking the time to come to us, to give us that presentation. Because so many people was asking about it, they were so disappointed. And they really feel like, I think, board member Booth, the Sugga said it, I don't know if we have to hire people during the summer or when schools start in September to make sure we have that extra staff there to register students. But we need to make sure we're doing the best we can as Prince George's County Public Schools. So we can be proud when people talk about our school, and we can be proud anytime someone wants to be registered, that's so very important, you guys. So again, thank you. I think this was a very important that we had school registration reviews. So everyone can know that it's not, that we have not been trying. We do have a system, a system that hopefully will make it better. We do have a task force, as they say, and it's going to get better. Everything gets better with time, and I'm believing that it's definitely going to get better. And one day we'll be saying, we got that perfect system, we got it, and we got it right, right, Dr. S?
I hope so.
Okay, moving right along, and this time we're going to go here to our budget moment. Approved vendor process, which is very important. So Mr. Stewart, purchasing director, you got this part. You got it, I mean, so I can hear that voice.
Can you see it?
I don't see nothing yet. It's coming.
Well, thanks for inviting me, Madam Chair. I'm going to talk to you all real quick about the procurement process. Starting with what we buy, and then talk about how we buy it. And then talk about, briefly talk about who we buy it from. So what we buy, the chairman office, along with the end users, purchase all the instructional materials, equipment supplies. Not instructional materials and contracted services to include construction. The methodologies that we use are based upon price. And anything under twenty-five thousand dollars are really not sourced by the purchasing office. It's actually sourced by the, by the end users. And the end users for purchases below fifteen thousand, they're required to get one quote. And a quote is the informal way of, of getting pricing. For items that are between fifteen and twenty-five thousand, they're required to get three quotes. And one of those quotes has to be from an MBE. What we've done since we don't source in the purchasing offices, we've created some strategic sourcing to ensure that our end users are getting the same prices. And the, the, the vendors aren't charging one of our clients or one of our customers one price and, and some of our other ones another price. We're constantly looking at our spend to try to look at creating strategic sourcing and strategic vehicles for them to purchase on. And then guiding them to these sites so they can order their supplies and services. For items that are above twenty-five thousand dollars, we use a formal competitive process. We use the, obviously, the invitation for bid. And then we use the RFP, we have consultant agreements, then we, we ride contracts. The IFB is, is for more simplified supply type items that have a definitive statement of work. The IFB, the vendor will submit his proposal, and we will evaluate price and only price. In contrast, the RFP is for more complex work, where the technical solution of the vendor is more important than price. And we will get their, their technical proposal and evaluate their technical proposal against an evaluation criteria that was set up by the end users. We will then, once we score that technical proposal, we'll couple that with a price and we'll make an award recommendation to the contractor that provides the best, best value to the school system. And we're moving more and more towards that process. We also ride contracts with other jurisdictions. The, while we can ride contracts and that does provide a benefit because it's faster, the work is already done and we're using competitive vehicles, there's restrictions. If, if we're not buying exactly what's on that contract, we can't buy those services. And, and that sometimes becomes a concern, because if we can't ride it, then we're left to put a solicitation back in place. And then we also negotiate consulting agreements with our, for professional services and and software maintenance. But the one thing I can say about the formal competitive process is while competitive process, if it's done fairly, doesn't guarantee your, you'll get a, the brand or the vendor you selected. It does guarantee that you will get a favorable price. And that's the one thing that the competition does, it will get you a fair and reasonable price for the services or supplies that we buy. Lastly, I'm going to talk about the registration process. On the registration process, to become a PG CPS vendor is pretty simple. You know, and I have the, the link up there for vendors to click on to, once they click on to the link. They'll, they'll see a registration form, they can complete the registration form. They can upload the certificate of insurance, the W nine and any other pertinent information that goes with their line of business. And within twenty-four hours, we will either let them know that they're an approved vendor or we'll tell them what they're missing and what they have to do to become an approved vendor. One thing I'll say is, just because you become a approved vendor doesn't guarantee that you will get work. It just makes you eligible to get work. And that's the one thing that as we continue to tell vendors who, who call us to say, well, such and such told us to call, or told us to register. We tell them, okay, you registered, but that doesn't guarantee that they will get work. We are moving to I supplier, obviously, and I, and I supplier, our quotes are going to start going through I suppliers, our request for quotes, our solicitations. So it's incumbent upon them to register to become a vendor. So when we put out a bid or a proposal that's in their line of business, they'll when we put out a bid or a proposal that's in their line of business, they'll get an email saying, hey, it's out there. It's it's at email and marketplace or it's on our website for them to bid. I know I kind of flew through this information. But I also know that I'll be giving you guys a more in-depth briefing briefing in the future. So but that's all I have for this evening.
Wow, okay. That was Stephanie in depth. Did anybody have any questions? Of concerns? I I'm honest, give you guys opportunities. If not, I have a lot. I don't know whether this is gonna be brief or not. So we have concerns about. I have concerns about the vendor process. I've heard from a lot of people complaining. I even heard even with the bidding process that once a bidding is made, the people who bid is not even aware when a bid is given to someone else. So my question is, how is this process undone? How 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 bid is choose? Because I think people have a right if they're bidding on something to know that, you know what? We decided not to give this bid to Mr. Coleman or and Ms. Berkeley, but we wanna we would decide to give it to Ms. Winston. I think they have a right to know that maybe, you know, not to know what be, you know, what she gave, but just let her know that she did a better presentation and her bid was better for us. And who they're working, you know, against, and maybe they look at it, but for us not to tell them, I think it's maybe something wrong. Then one of the things I found out is even as after being a board member, sometime we'll be required to buy certain things from a board. As a board's perspective, that we're spending a lot of money on things that are a lot cheaper that I can go out and get some services from vendors that are much cheaper than the vendors that will require to use. And I want to know why, you know, why, why are some of the vendors that and is it once they approve? Are they going up on their services once they approve when things are a lot cheaper from vendors outside? So that's another one. Are we not opening it up to maybe more vendors that are really that will be more? I would say be responsible with the tax dollars about citizens because that's the ones we're using. When I look at that, I have to pay a vendor fifteen dollars or something that I can get for five dollars. I have a problem with that. I just, I mean, and that's what I'm finding. See, I'm paying for a jacket or something that's forty nine fifty dollars and I can get that jacket for twenty five dollars. That's twenty whole taxpayer dollars that to me is ridiculous. And so I'm just wondering, how are these vendors choose? And who decides what is the most? I guess the most valuable one for us to get the best buck from our bank.
Okay, can I can I answer?
Yes, please.
Well, you know, the we we run a fair and a full and open competition for the for the supplies and services that we get. The one thing that we can't control is who bids on our 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 supplies and services. While we try to go out there and do outreach efforts to bring more vendors in, we we don't, we can only award a contract to a vendor who 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 provides a proposal in response to the solicitation. But that being said, we allow competition to do what it what it will do. So once we, you know, go through the competition, we typically will award to the lowest priced offer. But again, you know, but that's because the solicitation process is the is structured the way it is. We can't control the vendors that bid. We do open it up. We advertise all of our opportunities on email and marketplace. We also advertise them on our on our website. And you know, we typically get five or six vendors and our database has probably three thousand vendors in it. So you know, that seems to be the problem that I see as it relates to why we pay a price and why the there might be a cheaper price somewhere else. As it relates to the 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 non-awardee getting some information. We we don't release the information until the board approves the the bid. So what ends up happening, we end up posting it on board docs. The vendor is on board docs. He sees it before and you all haven't approved it. So they end up seeing the information and say, well, I didn't know I lost until I seen it on board docs. So we're trying to figure out the best process to one, give it to you all and allow you all to make your decision whether you're going to approve the award or not. And and balance that with telling the other ones that they did not get an award. So it's it's kind of a a a balancing act because, you know, we have to come to you all to get approved. And so it's not publicly announced, but once they put it on board docs, the public sees it. And we haven't had a chance to tell the non-awardees that they didn't get an award.
Okay, so one other thing is, I mean, and it's just so happened that hey, I was talking back before to a person who had who was a vendor. And one of the issues they they had was that that they have no way of knowing what that who has gotten a world. But then they said sometime they don't even get contact with jobs to get the opportunity to been. And then they mentioned she mentioned something about having to get insurance, be on insurance, head from Georgia County Public Schools or something on their insurance. So they paying this money to have this insurance. Or you know, every year, but then they don't get contact or reached out to when ser- services is needed for jobs. And it may so they may have paid a whole year for this insurance and have us on it, but then no one from our school system has offered them a job or even the opportunity to bid on a job. So when you say it was three thousand or whatever vendors, because I did hear you mention that, how do we reach out to these vendors? When it is an opportunity for them to be?
You you know, I mean, and and we we publicly announce all of our opportunities on email and marketplace and on our website. The the one of the things that I see as the procurement director and because we a lot of the things that we we buy are under a thousand dollars. You know, the 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 end users are purchasing on the purchasing them on their own. So we in purchasing only see the end result when we put the purchase order in place. So we try to, again, give them a list of vendors that they can use. And we tell them, we 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 explain to their our our end users that we want you to use the community-based businesses. We we have a requirement for anything over fifteen thousand dollars that you have to get three bids and one has to be from a community-based business or a a minority business. So you know, we 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 stress that what they have to do. But again, the only way we can do is continue to to reach out to our vendor community and using the I supplier and putting the quotes out there. I think that will, you know, once we finish that application or that platform, maybe more vendors, it'll show up in their email that, hey, we got a a opportunity out there for them to bid on. And and possibly they can submit a proposal or a quote for that as well.
And my last question is, on a personal note, District Six, I represent District Six, and I would like to use the business in District Six. So when I when I order things or when I ask my assistant to do certain things and she go on it, whether I'm having an event, I want to use food, vendors, a caterer. It seems as if it's hard for them to find out because they don't get to go into a certain system to see all the lists of the local vendors. They're just giving us select food. Why is that? Why is it not there that they don't have the opportunity to say, here the list of vendors is available in your surrounding communities for the services you have that it seems as if from what I've been hearing, it's it's hard to see. And they only given certain vendors. So I don't know if that's just a problem with our system in itself or what, but I just think they should have the opportunity to see every whenever they go in a system to see every vendor within, especially I'm with them. If I'm, you know, trying to use somebody in my district, you know, I think that, I mean, I'm I'm just gonna say, let's say, Christmas, I'm trying to do a Christmas event. I should be to find the local vendor businesses writing with District Six. And when I asked my assistant for that, she should be to find when I had a a catering event, eventually, not even a couple of weeks ago, I had my prayer breakfast and we had to use somebody in Silver Spring. Normally I try to use, you know, somebody I know, but then I try to use somebody else who, you know, you try to use a variety instead of the same people, but it's hard for them to locate to find who is in District Six. I know only one vendor already that's in District Six. But I just think the system needs to be a better system so we can make sure that we are just not using the same people, that we're actually using a variety of people who are registered. So I'm just trying to figure out, is it a way that we can have a better system? So even as a school board member, I won't have to say, well, because I know this person is District Six, I want to know all the vendors that are vendors in my district and I want to make sure that I'm fairly using all of them as I can. So I'm just curious.
You know, as as it relates to being able to give provide a list of vendors, we we can, we have a database of all the vendors and and we can provide that list and that'll tell, I mean, that will show the and and you know, I can work with my compliance person to get it posted online so everybody can see the list of vendors. Well, as far as locations, it'll have all the information, the vendor information. And and what co- I mean, what what supplies and services they can provide. But again, we, you know, we we can only, we we bring in new vendors, we can bring a vendor in in twenty four hours. So if there's a new vendor out there that you want to use and or your assistant wants to use, all they have to do is, you know, have them register. And you can use that vendor. It takes twenty four hours. So or less if on a phone call.
Okay, thank you so very much. I just wanted to know, I'm trying to use even the vendors that we already have that registered. I just want to that we're, you know, using everybody and with instead of people that we just know because this is the one company we use all the time because that's all we really know. Go ahead, Mr. Fossett. You want to say something?
Uh, no. Oh, I came off of mute. I'm sorry. Let me let me just say this since you asked, because I was thinking something and part of it as a former principal and Dr. Coleman can tell you this in the system. When when these vendors get on our vendor, the vendors list, they provide the documentation as needed and they become a certified vendor with Prince George County Public Schools that we can do business with. Some of the onus is on them also, like any other type of marketing, for them to let the schools know, the officers know that they're providing this service and that they're an approved vendor. That's that's a lot of times as a former principal, I have vendors who drop off flyers, do you know, hey, let know, hey, I have a new catering business in the area and I'm on approved vendor list, or they will come by and I say, hey, look, go to the website. This is how you get on approved on the list. We would love you to try to try your services. Because there's so many different entities and so many different offices, you know, in the system. So some some of the onus is on them. Like Mrs. Stewart said, it's it's not very hard if you're legit, legal, legitimate business. You can get on our vendors list for a certain amount, you know, services at a certain threshold. And anyone, any department can do business with you if you're on that list.
Thank you. I believe marketing is very important and you're right because that's how I knew Minneter Caterers would have been the he put it on Facebook. He sent it. Hey, I'm a vendor. You know, but I try to use educator, but I believe.
Queen, if I could add, Dr. Fossett just mentioned as a former principal, one of the strategies we also encouraged was if we have a vendor that we're wondering if we could use them as, like you said, to patronize local businesses, we would contact the purchasing office and ask. And therefore, they, instead of having the full list, they'd be able to help us go through who's approved. And we could try to select someone off of that approved vendor. So we can always contact purchasing to ask those questions in real time.
Great, great. Well, this has been a great presentation. Again, I want to thank you. What a director of purchase and Mr. Stewart, I appreciate it. Appreciate your report. We thank you so very much. Anybody else have any other questions? Nope. Okay, well, if not, we on four point oh follow-ups and next steps. I'm sorry, I had to tell my family. They were too loud. Okay. Okay, for the good of the order, the next step is, let's see, do anybody have anything for the good of the order? If not for the good of the order, I just want to say, since this is our last budget meeting for the year of twenty twenty two, I just want to say, happy holidays to you guys. It has been a great year, actually. Even serving you guys as the cheer has been a great year. I think we've done a lot. And when we do our presentation and present all the things that we have and all the people we have brought to make sure we are doing everything we can and be physically responsible the tax dollars that are spent by our taxpayers, but making sure that the school system is being ran and they have everything we need. So and it has taken each and every one of you to do that. So I just wanted to say, you know, give you guys much love and kudos that and that you know that I appreciate you and I'm gonna wish each and every one of you a happy holiday. So we're gonna go to the next step, which is the BAFA committee meeting will be held on January nineteenth, twenty twenty two. So I won't see you guys again till next year at five o'clock PM for a BAFA committee. And it will be on Zoom. So definitely, please check the your board page on PGPCS website for more information. I would also like to let the public know and for the members on this committee who may not know that our FY twenty twenty three budget work session and public hearings will begin next month. As in our previous year, the board will hold three work sessions and public hands to hear the detailed financial plans of the CEO and to garner the support as well as the recommendations of our constituent. It should be noted that since our last BAFA committee meetings, we talked about hosting two in person and one online that the board leadership and our CEO has made a recommendation for the work sessions, public hands to all be held virtually due to COVID. So I just want to make sure you guys know that because we talked about it at our last budget committee meeting and we took it through the board. And since then, it has been changes. And because of the COVID new bird of COVID, the CEO and our board chair thinks the meeting should be held virtually. So what's gonna happen is that due be due to the rising cost of COVID, what we're gonna do in tomorrow evening's board meeting, the board will be finalizing the details regarding which meeting platform we will use, whether it will be in person as we originally voted and talked about. Or whether it will be all virtual. So I want you to stay tuned. If you have concerns, if you wanted it to be in person and you feel like, you know, you need your opportunity to express and you need to express in person, you can send us an email. You can send in any of the committee members on this board an email and just let us know. Or you can come and speak. It's too late to register for tomorrow meeting, but you could still send us an email and let us know. But again, I just want to thank you guys and we will have the meeting whether it's in person or virtual. We'll do it on virtually. You'll still be able to be seen. And you'll be able to hear and it's better for a lot of people in the cold winter months anyway, but we will make the decision on tomorrow as a board. So at this time, that's my closing remarks is to just say, if nobody else have anything else to say, I just want to say thank you, everybody. This has been a great meeting. We got really great information. Again, we've had a great year. Pam, I know you've been making emotions tonight. You want to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, it's just the two of us. Motion to adjourn, I guess, take two of us to close this meeting.
You make that motion. I'm gonna second that motion. I want to say good good night to everybody. I'll see you guys tomorrow at the board meeting. Stay tuned tomorrow. We will be having our regular board meeting. And thank you guys to staff for taking the time to be here this evening. And everybody have a great evening. If I don't see you tomorrow at the board meeting, happy holidays to each and every one of you.
And we voted yes to adjourn.
Yes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you all so much.
Thank you as always, Ms. Berkeley. Great job.
Good night.